To have to either an election in August or November. We've supplied essentially two bridges. One that shows what a 65-hour-per-week full-service library looks like in New Orleans, and one what our current library would look like going forward, 55 hours a week. Perhaps Kathy Russ can talk about what a reduced library would look like, and then you can let us know if we have to go back and do something else, or if you have enough information for the bridge to August or November. Because again, we don't want to come back and have you say, "Well, Zerlike, you didn't give me this information. I need to delay this discussion for another two weeks."
Right.
So if we could at least get concurrence on what kind of a bridge library you'd like to see, whether it's August or November, tonight, we can come up with that. You may already have the answer after you've listened to Kathy to indicate what a reduced library may look like, 15 hours a week or 150,000 dollars.
Wait, before we go to Kathy, it's not going to do us any good to have a bridge if we're not going to get council members to say that they're going to have a vote on the ballot. If council members are not going to say that they're willing to go out for a millage on the ballot, there's no sense to even talk about a bridge.
It's the bridge to nowhere.
Mayor?
Yes. Councilwoman Beltrame?
I think that as important as knowing what kind of a millage increase some of us might want to pursue, it might give some of the rest of us a clearer picture if we knew what that millage increase might buy. Therefore, please let Ms. Russ answer Mr. Zerlike's question.
I want her to answer. I'm just indicating for council that if there is no -- I mean, from the comments that I've heard from council members so far, I'm not seeing that people are willing to go along with that. So I think hearing what it is would be helpful, yes. But I'm saying there is no guarantee.
Just wanted to let you know what a library would look like under different funding levels, that's all. What you do with that information is up to you.
Is it time? Where would you like me to go?
After Councilwoman Beltrame made her proposal, I did look at some numbers, and I guess first to hearken back to the memo that I gave you on February 28th, I indicated that the minimum -- for the library's budget, and this is my opinion, that you don't start at zero. What you -- where you start is $550,000 because that's what you need for utilities, for insurance, and all of the, what I call, infrastructure of the building. I went back through and did an absolute scalpel scrutiny of the library's budget, and I was able to bring that down to $515,000. So that is where I started. However, I need to be very clear when I tell you that that does not include staff, that does not include library materials, and it does not include any computers other than the essential computers for staff. So in other words, there is no technology center, there are no Internet computers for children, there are no Internet computers for teens. So $515,000 is what you need to keep the lights on. I think it's important to also know that there are two aspects to what a library does. There are the library materials, absolutely. Library materials are to the library what groceries are to Kroger, what clothes are to Macy's, and so forth. Absolutely, the library materials are important. What's also important, and the other reason why people use the library, is they use it for the service, the expertise of the staff. Can you help me find a job? What are some other sites that I could look at in order to help me find a job? I have questions about investments. I need to know how to start a small business, that sort of thing. So when you think about the library service, it's important to think about materials, but it's also important to think about staff. So if you're starting from $515,000, just to keep the lights on, and we know it's more than that, but that's what I'll say, that's your baseline. Library materials, you know, where the materials budget is $425,000 now, I put that at a $400,000 level, and the reason why I did that is twofold. For a community of 80,000 people, you need to have enough supply to meet the demand. Another reason is, as you've all seen from the letters that I have forwarded to you from other libraries, if the Troy library is open for less than 55 hours a week, other libraries, including the libraries in our cooperative, will cease reciprocity. So what that means is, if we're not part of our cooperative, the group discounts that we currently receive, we won't be able to take advantage of those. What that means is, instead of getting a 40% discount on a book or on a database, we'll have to pay full price. So I think it's important to keep that in mind when you're assessing the level of your materials budget, because even though it's slightly reduced from what we have now, we're not going to be able to purchase as much for it. The bookend to that is, because these other libraries will no longer reciprocate with the Troy library, Troy library becomes the only game in town for Troy residents. And I did some comparisons of numbers. We are -- the library is about 100,000 items less in circulation than we were last year. What that means is, we checked out 100,000 fewer items. We've seen a decrease in our services, and we've seen a decrease in the people who come through the door. I know the reason for that. I have colleagues and friends at many of the other libraries, and they've all told me they've seen a huge influx of Troy residents, and the reason that most of them give is because they wanted to get their cards so they can be grandfathered in. And they're finding, as you all know, that that's not the case. They will not receive service. So my point was with this is, if the Troy library suddenly has 100,000 additional checkouts, in other words, go back to last year's levels, we need staff to accommodate that. The other thing is, in 15 hours a week, and that's about what you get for $1.6 million, I personally don't know how sustainable that will be. That will be sustainable only as long as you have the staff to work those 15 hours. What you get is, you get about 20 to 23 people. And what you also get is, you know, depending on what the schedule of the library happens to be, and I always try to look at things from a service perspective, not so much what is convenient for the staff, but what's convenient for the public. So to me, I thought, well, one morning, five and a half hours, one evening, five and a half hours, and every Sunday. Will you have staff who are willing to work one morning a week? Sure. At one evening a week? Sure. Every Sunday of their life? Not so sure. What you also have to contend with is, as people leave, will you be able to replace them? I don't know if you will. And I know that there is some thought out there that people are desperate for jobs, and they'll take any job that they can get. But if you're working for 10 hours, or, excuse me, $10 an hour, and you feel like you're in a combat zone, your return on your investment, it starts to go away. I can also back that up by saying, since it was announced that the library was going to close, 12 staff members have left, seven have taken full-time jobs, and five have gone to part-time jobs. Many have gone to the Warren Library because they're hiring now. Bloomfield Township has two part-time jobs posted. No, I guess my point is, there are jobs at other libraries. So you could do this. I don't want to tell you that you couldn't do it, because you could do it, but I don't know how long it will last. And the difference between the library closing in this scenario and the library closing in the scenario that we had been going with is that we had a closing plan. We had everything prepared. We had, you know, we were going to leave it buttoned up so the library, if it were to reopen, the staff could come in and, you know, be almost ready to go. Under the $1.6 million option, as people trickle away, you won't have that closure, you won't have that buttoning up, you won't have that. It'll just be sort of left in suspended animation. I think of it sort of as a, if you remember from Alien movies, you know, they send a crew up to the space pod, and they, you know, wonder what happened to the staff, because the cigarette smoke is still in the air from the half-beaten Danish, but the alien got everybody. So that shows you where my mind's been lately. So to me, I think I need to make you aware of these things so you can make a decision. The other thing, Councilwoman Beltrame and I have talked about this, under her proposal, she had estimated a certain amount for fines, and I feel that that amount is too high. I don't think that you would meet that amount, so I think you'd actually need more than is proposed.
Anybody have any questions for Mrs. Russ? Mayor Perdell Purwin?
Yes, I have a concern. Ms. Russ, because I'm in there, and I see, you know, when the door's open as it is, you know, we're all out there banging, please let in, and when night comes, and you say it's going to be closing now, it's going to be closing, there's -- I'm concerned if you smash all of that, as the proposal says, into 15 or 20 hours, I'm concerned about a safety issue. The parking lot, the overflow, the, I need this, I need, can you help me here? Can you do that? And I don't see that. I am concerned about that. Have you given some thought to how many people might come if you condensed all of the staff?
Oh, absolutely, because what I've -- what staff told me spontaneously is that, they said, "Every day will be like a Sunday." And if you've ever been to the Troy library on a Sunday, you know that there's, it's not that there's no parking, it's there's less than no parking, and people are parking at the police station, people are parking over at City Hall, or people are parking at the community center and coming over. I see that exacerbated. I see that absolutely. I think too, from, again, from a service perspective, if the library's open on a Sunday for four hours, and you're concentrating all of that business, I don't know how much of -- to me, it's not great service if you have to stand in line to check out your book for two hours. And even if we brought in self-checkouts, the self-checkouts run about $20,000 each. That's actually more than the cost of a part-time library aide. But, you know, we could certainly set them up, but you still need staff to check materials in. You still need staff to assist people when possible. One of the things that I didn't mention, and I apologize, the 15 hours a week would not even be at the service level that currently exists. You know, you could add back in the computer lab a certain amount of computers, and I did do that. What I tried to do is balance out computers and staff, add a certain number of computers for the public, but that kept the staffing level a little bit lower. But there wouldn't be no, we wouldn't be able to let people place holds. Holds is huge. You can look in the library's computer, you can place a hold, a library staff member will go pull the hold, and it'll be available for you on the hold shelf. You come in, you pick it up, you check it out, and off you go, which is a time saver for the public, and they love it. I, since our layoffs, have been pulling the holds in the morning, because, you know, it's important for me to pull my weight, too. And I can tell you that there are many, many, many days when the holds report is anywhere between 65 and 75 pages long. That's almost 500 items, and it has often taken me and another person three hours each to do that. That can't happen in this scenario. It absolutely cannot happen. Again, with the reciprocity with other libraries, other libraries will not extend that privilege to us, so people would be limited to what's on the shelves of the Troy library. And in that case, if you wanted a book, and you checked and it was checked out, you'd have to keep checking the computer until you saw it was in, and then you'd have to drive like mad over there and hope you got it before somebody else did. Again, to my way of thinking, that's not great service. That's not what we're used to. As far as the computers, we could certainly make a certain number of computers available to the public. We would not have the staff to assist. So, you know, could you help me? I don't know how to attach my resume to this email. I'd like to apply for this job. No, I'm really sorry. There's a book on the shelf. Good luck to you, you know? And that goes against the grain of a librarian. We would do it if that's what you want us to do, absolutely. But that's basically what it comes down to. In terms of the waiver, because I know that that had been brought up, that there's the possibility that the state will vote on, basically mandating that if a library applies for a waiver, it'll be granted, that would not be available till October 1st at the earliest. So what that would mean is, from July 1st till September 30th, these conditions would be in effect. And, you know, after October 1st, if the Troy library were granted a waiver, we could talk about reciprocity with other libraries and also with our cooperative. But I should mention that the other libraries are under absolutely no obligation to reciprocate with us. It is a local decision, and they don't have to. So, Councilwoman Curran, that sort of answered your question.
And then how many letters have we received?
I have six.
So far, and one said, Rochester said, "We'll continue until there's a decision," and many of the other letters said, "We've talked about a goodbye."
Clausen and the Baldwin Library and the Bloomfield Township Library have ceased service to Troy residents. The Royal Oak Library is going to revisit their decision at their board meeting on May 24th pending your decision, and, so let's read what that's for, as is the Library Cooperative and Rochester. So that's all six.
Councilwoman McGinnis, you had a question for Mrs. Russ?
I have a question for you. I appreciate all the information you gave us. That was a logistical nightmare that I was envisioning in my head. But I think it's -- it's not a lot better, but it's very important that you can kind of paint that picture to us. So thank you. I just had a --
Any others have a question for Mrs. Russ? Thank you.
But I do have a kind of --
Yes, go ahead.
And it kind of ties into Councilwoman Fleming's comments about the concessions, because I agree with you to some extent. I mean, trying to put all this together, there are avenues that we've been trudging forward, I think, not just this, the mill increase, there are other avenues that we've been trudging forward on as well. And timing is unfortunate, but of course, I think we all understand that we couldn't just wave a wand and expect to have an answer from everyone in terms of concessions. But I do agree with you in terms of, you know, a portion of the community, and who knows how big that is, that that is a sticking point in their mind. And we see it all the time, we're hearing about it in every single city, and we've been talking about it, and we've been making progress, but we can't force a deadline on it. So my issue is with this. I think that you're right, and I think that there's a lot to be said about that. But the fact that I think that we lose sight of a little bit when we start talking about the library is that the library is the only issue that's going on, and that any funding that we pull from someone else would just be to fix the library situation. My opinion is, there are a lot of things that we've seen up there, pretty much at this point, I think every department except for the police department can't be cut anymore. So we're not going to be getting any additional revenue from any other department, you know, except for when we'll see the decrease in the employee levels in the police department. But there are many other things that we're talking about that we're going to need revenue for, aside from the library, and we're not quite sure how we're going to fix those scenarios yet either, whether it's the, you know, snow plowing, whether it's replacing the four in the police department to even get us back to a sustainable level, which is going to be a very different police department than the one that we see now. My opinion is that you're right. We need additional answers in terms of concessions to deal with, you know, all of these issues that we're dealing with. But the library situation, I feel like either we know what's here, we have a decision to make where we're going to either find some funding based on what we know here, which to me looks like the thing we can count on is using fund balance, to cobble together something for the library, and then look for a long-term solution. But I feel like we're going to be revisiting all of these issues without addressing the revenue. You know, I feel like if we get, we were to get the concessions from everyone tomorrow, it wouldn't solve all of the issues that are on the table. And it seems like a lot of our conversation will tend to revolve around the library, but there are a lot of other things out there that I think we can see that are going to be hanging in the balance. And there are a lot of really reduced service levels right now. We're hearing all about the library because it's right here, and here and now. But, you know, we haven't really addressed how we're going to look at the snow plowing, and, you know, that that was a huge issue this year. We're not, we haven't addressed how we're going to deal with the four police officers that we've cut that makes a police department unsustainable. It's not even the police department that people are expecting right now. It's going to be a totally different operation. So I think we still have to keep our eye on a long-term solution, and I think that that will have to do something with revenue.
Anybody else from council on this? Councilwoman Harlan?
Are we, if we keep the library open at a service level similar to where we are, I don't want to say today, but I mean like a couple months ago, are we needing to hire anybody in IT? Is that the next?
Probably. That position was cut because of the 100 and some odd computers that are over there. Also, building maintenance.
That's correct.
Those costs would have to be added back in. We've lost three people in the building maintenance because of the loss of that facility and museum and the nature center. So there'd have to be probably some adjustment there, and definitely in the computer area. Not only the computer help desk person, but also the number of computer charges and so forth would have to be placed back in there, too.
Do we, I mean, does that library utilize a full-time IT person?
There's one stationed there.
We have none.
And then we also have the consulting agreement, too, for the system, I believe. Isn't that correct?
We have a network administrator.
I'm referring to the --
For the cooperative?
Yes, thank you. That's the Polaris. That's the word I was trying to think of.
The Polaris contract, that is a software program, and so we're paying for that. In terms of other consultants, you don't, the library doesn't use?
No, I'm referring to that contract, this continuing contract, and it's in addition to our internal IT.
Yes, because it's software that only the library uses.
Right, that's what I was getting at. So the, so this full-time IT person that we're using, is it as much as the budget? I mean, because there's a $300,000 budget in there for IT, if I recall.
That's for the whole department. That's, their budget for the computers includes all the replacement, includes the software, includes all the make the network connections, the lines going in there, and also the support staff, the administrative staff, the portion of the staff we have here. It's all built into per, the per-unit charge that is, goes into them. The budget, the position is budgeted in the IT department. It's stationed, the person is stationed over at the library full-time, basically.
And by the way, what, upon closure of the library, what happens to all of this technological Computers, software?
Computers.
Does that software contract extend beyond, or is there a, because my understanding is it's a multi-year contract.
The Polaris company has been very good to us, and they have warned me that they would not hold us accountable for the unused portion of our contract. Essentially, our contract would end on June 30th at the closure of the library, and they would not bill us for anything, and we would not owe them anything.
Okay, I appreciate that. I've been wondering about that, and I meant to ask.
Yeah, they've been very good to us.
Councilwoman Sawyer?
In the same, as Martin was asking, we would also have revenues increased if we put the budget back in place. Is that correct?
There's some revenue.
There's some revenue.
The state revenue is not a big, I mean, it's nothing, so.
No, I thought it was $100,000.
It was $100,000 for fines. We get --
Right, yeah.
There's a couple hundred thousand, too.
We've had a hundred and --
$180,000.
Plus another $20 for fees, like that's it.
But that's the IT person. But if I could, I really don't understand why we're even discussing the type of library that we're thinking about. If we're going to take fund balance, and we're going to take a certain amount of money, certainly we would go from 1.6 to 2.1 or 2 or 3, in my opinion. It's not even worth discussion. If we're going to do it, we should just do it as it is. We would lose too much on the other end. So I think that's a silly discussion.
No, because it's zero in two, correct? Except for the, keeping the --
I'm talking about a bridge. I'm talking about a 1.6 bridge as opposed to a 2.1. It should be a 2.1 bridge, if that's what we're going to do. And I think there's consensus around this table that that's what we should do. Now, I'm very confident that there's going to be concessions by July 1st. So I really don't think that's worth discussing unless it doesn't happen, okay? So I think we should assume that it's going to happen, okay? So I think we can move forward from that front. And thirdly, if there are concessions, and the ERIT program is successful, there's going to be some additional monies available there also. So I think it's somewhat premature to look for the number on a millage at this point. I think we can come to a consensus to have a bridge, and then get some language for a millage, then make sure we've done all our due diligence, make sure that we only ask for what we need, and we can come up with that number, I think, before a deadline. And then once we come up with that, then we, that's the number we use. And why be afraid to ask the people what they want? There's no reason, in my opinion, to not ask the people, do they want to continue the library? And if they say no, then it's over. It's over. It's done, finished, and we don't even need to talk about it anymore. So if we're afraid that we haven't done our due diligence, I mean, when are we ever going to get to that point? I think we're at that point. We've done what we need to do. Get the concessions. They're going to happen, one way or another, they're going to happen. So let's just move forward. Let's get together, let's do this.
We have to have wording.
I don't know if we legally can do something like that.
We have to have wording for ballot language.
By a certain date.
Thinking about it, because we have to have a --
By May 16?
And out to the county.
For August. If it's for a November ballot, it has to be done by August, what, 24th or something like that. So that's the reason why I'm saying we need to start thinking about what we would ask for in millage, because if we wait until the last minute to do it, then we wrestle with the wording.
I don't think we should rush into this. I really don't.
I'm not saying rush into it. I'm saying, let's start thinking about that so that we can have everybody on council be thinking in those terms, just as we're thinking about concessions to 10.
I can understand that, but I think maybe May 16, that's unrealistic, in my opinion.
Is there anything that anybody from council wants to request for our wrap-up and library decision for May 9th that you don't have now?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Harlan?
Oh, I think it's just easier to put it in writing, and, because I've got this sheet here and this sheet over here, so I'll put it in.
Like sooner rather than later?
Yeah, well, it's almost in writing right now. It's easy to refine it, so it's, I might even just stop by.
Councilwoman Beltrame?
I don't have anything for that, but I do have something that I want to say, so I don't change subjects if the rest of you are. A couple of things, and I bring this up tonight as much as anything, because I know that changing this document, the more you can do ahead of time, the better. I am concerned that, you know, we say to people, "Go to the budget, you'll know what's really going on." The budget says that the library, the museum, and the nature center are closing and no longer funded. The museum and the nature center are not closing. Their operations and programming is no longer provided by the city of Troy. Therefore, I think when we say in our budget, "Those entities are closing," that's not even correct, and it shouldn't be said. And it's in both the annual budget on page five, and it's in the three-year budget. So I think that needs to be changed. I also have a concern, and Mr. Lamorato, I watched you on the web. Speaking of which, whom I think we're doing such a good job, there were 28 people online last Monday night, and that's all. That's all. You did a really good job with the gas tax last Monday night, saying, "Well, you know, it is a per-gallon tax. It's 19 cents. Whether you buy $80 worth of gas or $20 worth of gas, it's 19 cents a gallon." But later on in the discussion, and in this document, one of the things we start with is it's influenced by the price of gas. And yes, it is, because gas at $4 a gallon, I buy less than I buy at $2 a gallon in a month, if I can. But I think that that wording in this document also needs to be refined, because the gas tax revenue we receive is in fact influenced by the price of gas and vehicle miles traveled as it pertains to how much gas you're willing to put money out for, not how much money we, revenue we get from that. So I think that may be all. These are my takeaways. Oh, no. When we talk about the demographic statistics, we use the 2010 census for the population, but we don't use them for any of the other things. Do we not have those figures for any of the other things? Monica shaking her head, "No, they haven't been broken out in public stuff." Okay, thank you. Nothing else?
Okay. Anybody else? Councilwoman, if there's anything else for the night?
Just, no, I will be here Thursday.
We're sorry. I thought it was Thursday evening that you were-
No, I have a family commitment Thursday afternoon, as I told you all two weeks ago. I do, I do have the question, in essence, that I posed to you all tonight, that I will put in writing so that if someone else does not ask it, Mr. Zerlig or somebody can ask it.
Thank you.
I just wanted to share, this is from the community conversation, it was on April
26th. Councilmember Slater was there with me. Resident did hand some notes. I've been trying to, if people take notes, just so you get a flavor of what was going on, so I'm just going to pass this out so that you can-
Thank you.
Any others? Councilwoman Slater?
Councilwoman McGinnis and I have office hours tomorrow from 6:00 to 8:30 at the community center, if anybody wants to. Maybe we'll clean that up.
Okay.
Well, yes, one thing.
Okay, because I have to call on the audience.
I agree. I just wanted to know, and we don't need necessarily need to discuss it in depth tonight, but I wanted to know if there's any way that we can cross-promote the Troy Historical Society and the Troy Nature Society? Because obviously, the city interacts with all of its water users, on water bills, what day, and so on and so forth. And those two groups, you know, they need to get some money going so they can open their doors. And I just thought maybe we could, I don't know what restrictions we have, but if we can at least assist them in getting the word out, I think that would help them, give them open the doors for longer.
Anybody else? Okay, for the audience, I have two cards here, so I'll call on who speaks first. Bruce Bollendale?
Mayor, I believe at the last budget meeting, a statement was made that the city's lost 2 million man-hours of service available. Is that a crew statement? At what timeframe did it cover?
It was 100, I'm sorry.
You know, the last thing, we responded right away, and I think that our usual thing is we take all the public comment, and then if, we don't have response built in on our agenda, is that correct?
That's correct.
Correct, so. Go ahead and ask your things, but we're not going to answer from here.
In that case, I would say it was 300,000 hours.
Go ahead.
I'm a little confused. I'm going to ask a question and sit down. Did I hear correctly that in the last meeting, there were 2 million man-hours of service that have been eliminated because of the budget cuts? Those services then being denied, not that denied is the wrong word, but unavailable to the public?
Our next speaker is Richard Peters. Mr. Peters?
Yes. Evening, council. Just let me speak.
Put the mic up there, you go.
Thanks for letting me speak, and hope we all have a nice time. I got a couple ideas. The bridge, I want to resubmit a half a mil that the-
It's not, it's not-
It is.
It's only for Katie.
Mike, it's just for the TV.
Yeah, I'd like to submit that the bridge be a half a mil, and that the council push that through. When you think about it, it could be commensurate with just last year's tax base, where people would not be getting any increase in taxes, you know, and they wouldn't get any decreases, so it'd just be neutral in that sense. Also, on these contracts, I know they're three years, but particularly on expenditures, and I was talking last week about these vehicle contracts. Now, if they were like one or had options in them where people, they wouldn't be tied into these contracts where you could say, "Well, look, we only need only half these vehicles this year instead of next year." That might be a better way of doing it. Also, the sewer that closed the roads. Now, these sewers take a long time to go through these budgets. Now, it seems to me if you delay them a little bit, so what? You could take the funds that goes into the sewers and stick them into the roads. That would be my view of that. Let's see what else we have here. I think that's just about it. Also, on the roads, the fellow was talking about, I'm just wondering, I remember Claiborne Powell, he was a senator from Rhode Island, and he talked about reusing tires to put into cement, and I think they used it for a while. I don't know how environmentally it was, but the idea that popped in my head as he was talking about combining the asphalt with the cement, and maybe using that on cheaper roads instead, if that could be, you know, viable. Okay, I guess that's about it.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak? Mrs. Daniels?
I'm sorry, I just had a few comments that I wanted to make after listening to this presentation, which was very nicely done. Thank you all, it's very good information. But a budget, my understanding is, is a set of assumptions. And so if you start with an agenda, which I think you have, you have an agenda to raise our taxes, and then you build your budget based on your assumptions, your agenda, and then you indicate that we need X number of dollars versus Y number of dollars, and we can't cut here, and we've got excess there, but we never get to the point where the bottom line is, then you want to talk about the money, but the money comes from us. So it's your agenda, your budget, your assumptions, but it's our money. And never once did I hear anyone say anything about the taxpayers and the kind of burden that we have right now. So it kind of bothers me that when I see you have $2.3 million assigned to our drainage system, do we have a problem with our drainage system this year? I know, that's a rhetorical question. But there's $2.3 million set aside in case of an emergency. We have $10 million of unallocated funds in case of an emergency. We have $1.8 million in our sewers in case of an emergency. I would say that the emergency that we have right now is funding our library, and it looks to me like we already have enough money in our budget for the library. You just don't want to allocate it. And you're not taking into consideration the commitment that we are already making. Right now, from, I have to only use myself because I only know my own situation, although I know that mine is multiplied by hundreds of thousands of people. I have a net loss of $60,000 in my little home, based on when I bought it in 2002 and what it's worth today. So every single dollar that I pay to my mortgage, to my taxes, to my electric bill, to my cable, to every single thing that I pay for on a monthly basis is money I am throwing out the window. And yet you want me to pay more in taxes when you're sitting on millions of dollars of unallocated funds that's used for emergency. Now, your budget, or your projections say that in the year 2014, we should see a return to property values start increasing. But you don't, you then say, "But we're going to have a disaster in 2014 in terms of our drainage fund, or the industrial roads, and you want another special election now?" You've spent $400,000 on surveys and special elections and studies, and now you want to spend another $90,000 for a special election in August? I think that's terrible. I also did a little study, by the way, after I listened to Mr. Licari last budget, or last council meeting, and he talked about the property values going down. I did a little study. I looked at his property, I looked at Mr. Zerlig's property, I looked at Mrs. Belltramin's property, Wade Fleming, Mary Kerwin, Dane Slater. I looked at all of your property values and all of your taxes. I don't know where you live, I'm sorry. That's what. That was the ones I could find. And in every case, your taxes, your own personal property taxes have gone up every single year, until maybe 2010, a couple of you had a slight tax reduction, a very, very slight tax reduction. But the net was an increase over all of you. And yet you sit here and say, "Our property tax revenue has gone down," when every one of you has seen the taxes go up. I don't understand it. Brooks Patterson said that he looks at his budget, his rolling budget constantly, and he's constantly adjusting the numbers for the actual dollars that are coming in. I think you need to do that, instead of budgeting out three years where it's just simply assumptions. And then Mr. Lamorato, I love when you said, "It's just too early to tell." When you're asked a question that you can't support and answer, but it's not too early to tell that by 2014, the earth's going to fall apart if we don't get more tax money, or if we don't give more tax money to you. I don't understand why you would assume an increase in water usage from 2010 to 2011 when you had a continuous reduction in usage for the past three or four years. Then, because all of a sudden you say there's going to be a significant increase, we have to have more money. Oh, it looks like that's about all I can mention. It just bothers me when I see a meeting that apparently was set up with a set of assumptions that you wanted your conclusions to meet, and then you come to us and want more money out of our pockets. It's just, it's amazing to me. But thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Yes, I'd like to speak.
Yes, give us your name. You want to hand him the mic, please? Thank you, Mrs. Daniels.
Yes, my name's Mark Cuddy, and I wasn't here before, so I couldn't ask to speak earlier, but I appreciate the chance. I'd like to take a little different tone than that. I would like to thank the council for what I heard tonight. I had the chance to talk to two council members this week and wasn't able to get to more, although I have sent emails. I heard the most positive comments from the council that I have ever heard, and I'm not a long-term council washer, but I have been watching since the library has been a problem. And I heard the most encouraging news that I have heard yet, consistent with what I heard in the engagement meetings and in the survey, which was, yes, we want the library, and in most cases, a clear majority from what I heard, yes, we will pay more tax money. Certainly, we will increase the millage and provide you with the revenue that you need. So that you hear from other people in this room tonight, I want to say thank you. I am going home tonight thinking that we have a good chance of doing what most people said, and I do not see you here with an agenda that is anti-anything. I think I see the best common approach from the council that I have seen so far, and I appreciate it.
Anyone else? Thank you. Thank you all for coming. I remind council that for May 9th, we're going to meet from 6 to 8 in the wrap-up and library decision, and then our regular council meeting will start at 8:30. With our, and the agenda will come out, so people can see that. Then, May 16th, we'll have the public hearing and adoption of the budget, which we must do by law by May 16th. Okay, thank you.